This is the budget meeting for the 22nd of April of the National Board of Education. It is 5:32 PM and I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Guarino is here, Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Zim, Ms. Zim will be joining us shortly. She's trying to connect up, as is Ms. Bishop. Ms. Giulio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
And Ms. Timmons will also be joining us shortly. We also have Dr. Mosley.
Here. I'm just having some trouble with audio. I'll be right there as soon as I figure it out, but I'll be there. I'm here.
Okay, we have Mr. Donovan and we have Ms. Kinsella is here. Okay, we have one, we have a quorum and we have one item on our agenda and that is the budget for fiscal year, for the next fiscal year. So Ms. Johnson, would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
Yep, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we all got an email today regarding RSA 194C, their colon 10, public hearing before any final adoption of the school administration unit budget as provided in RSA 194 dash C colon 9. At least one public hearing shall be held within the school administrative unit at the time and place specified by the school administrative unit board chairperson upon a parliamentary budget prepared by the school administrative union unit board. Notice of such public hearing and a summary of the parliamentary budget shall be submitted by the secretary of the board for publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the school administrative units at least seven days prior to the date of the hearing. The budget subsequent to its final approval by the school administrative unit board shall be posted in a public place in each constituent school district and given such other publication as the school administrative unit board may be determined. I just want this for the record. We all got this. We should have gotten it in an email today sent out because I get it that we can't do, you know, really public hearings and having anybody there because of what we're going through, but you know, it's still, it's public hearing is public hearing and the governor, I don't think overturned this RSA 194 dash C colon 9. So I want it on the record.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Johnson. I saw Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown's hand up and then Ms. Raymond.
I'll defer to Ms. Raymond and then I think I might have a possible alternative.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I just wanted to mention that the pub, that we are part of the city budget. They will be having a public hearing on the entire city's budget, which includes our budget as a division of the city. So I encourage people to attend that meeting in May. I don't, I don't have the date offhand. The other thing was that I wanted to mention, was it Ms. Johnson brings up an important point. We aren't meeting in public, in public today because of the COVID-19 outbreak. And so we are required to still avoid meetings of 10 or more people. And so we're meeting remotely this evening via Zoom, most of us from our homes. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. So we, the point is that we are going, going to have a public hearing and it's, it's going to be in May and people will get a chance to weigh in on the, on the school board budget. And as Ms. Raymond said, these are, this is a time of emergency. That's how we're operating right now. So with that issue behind us, I, I hope our next, our next, our, our one item on the agenda is the budget. And I'm going, I saw Ms. Brown and then Ms. Johnson. Go ahead, Ms. Brown. You have the floor.
Hey, yeah, just before we move on to the budget, which is the focus, I think we're pretty much all in agreement that this is not our preferred method of meeting and we really would like to follow the traditional procedure of having, letting the public have their voice. And I'm glad that we can still do that at the Board of Alderman meeting. I had a suggestion to offer and honestly, I just thought of this while I was logging into Zoom. So, so I, I don't, but, and we probably can't even vote it right now in this format, have to be with the entire board. But I wanted to offer an after, an option for a possibility that people could send us in on the record letters that we could post in the form of like a PDF on the website under our budget tab. I was thinking we could make it very strict in scope that it had to be within 500 words, approximately the equivalent of a one to two-page essay. The words would, the 500 words would include their full name and address of the sender and they'd have to be a Nashville resident. We'd post the link for a minimum or a maximum of seven days, like the list of these PDFs. And we would reserve the right to not post any letters that had, contain any profanity or personal attacks on any personnel. It would have to be on point for the budget specifically. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if that is something that in the legal realm, because I know we are following our legal obligations by using the Alderman meeting as our public meeting, but this might give those folks that are passionate about the school budget, a platform to say what they need to say within a reasonable amount of time. But they would have to know that if they submit it to us under that format, it would be on the record. Thank you.
That's a, that's an excellent idea, I think. Very good. Ms. Johnson, you have the floor next.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor the point, but the RSA is very clear and the governor did not say that we can circumvent this on a budget. He gave us other rules because of the social distancing. But this wasn't part of this and the RSA is very clear about this. So again, I just want this on the record because of, you know, it says before final adoption of the school administration, unit budget as provided, at least one public hearing shall be held within the school administration unit. And it didn't happen. I get this is unprecedented times, but the RSA is clear and we can't circumvent an RSA. Thank you.
I don't think we are circumventing it if, if we have a public hearing on the 10th of, of May.
Yeah, one has nothing to do with the other. That, that just comes within the whole city. This is separate that the people would come in, as we all know, and just talk about the school budget. That's the whole city encompassed. So, thank you.
Ms. Bishop, I just wanted to mention that Ms. Bishop has joined us. Does anyone else want to weigh in on this before we go on to the, we are going to speak about the budget? And does, does administration want to talk about the budget before we have a discussion or?
Sure. Dan, you wanted to just kind of kick us off a little bit about some things to think about and some things that we should start to discuss and, and format as we start to move through, through this process?
Sure. As I, if you got a chance to read the email with the memo, we're currently, the budget on the table right now is 115,231,735. That's a 3.3 million, 149,445 dollar increase, which percentage wise is a 2.81% increase. In the materials I sent the mayor, this, this budget was sent to the city so that they could put together the draft budget book. It certainly was not sent to the city as an approved budget by the Board of Ed because the Board of Ed had not approved it. But for the draft budget book, we needed to have something. So that's the budget that it was sent over and put in the book. What the mayor suggested, and all he can do is suggest because it's the Alderman who will make the final decision. He suggested that we reduce our budget to a 2.25% increase. And that would decrease in dollars our budget by 627,593. So as I said in the memo, this board is free to bring it down to 225, keep it at a 281. They can move it up to a 3.5 if they want. It's whatever the board would like to do. And then when the board approves that budget, it will move over to the Board of Aldermen. We do have a meeting with the Board of Aldermen on Tuesday, May 19th to discuss our budget. They will, the budget committee will then ask us questions and then they will move forward and vote on the total budget. With the point being that if, if the board does, if the Board of Aldermen votes to put our budget at 2.25 as the mayor recommends, we will then have about three weeks in the month of June to reduce our budget by 627,000. So if the board makes the decision to send over a number higher than that 225, all I would suggest is between now and sort of the beginning of June that there are some ideas and discussions in place if we're forced into making decreases to the budget.
If I could just.
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
I think Ms., sorry, I don't make a point. I think Ms. Raymond had her hand up before I started.
I apologize. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond. No? You're on.
I keep doing it backwards. I'll wait for Dr. Mosley's comments.
Okay, sure. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley. You have the floor.
I just wanted to add if the, so if the board decides that they want to make reductions or we can also come back with some recommendations for the board to consider for those reductions, if the board shall please.
Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I just had a couple of questions about the memos that were sent to us. The, the mayor had indicated that if the budget is passed as proposed, taxes will be about four and a half percent. Is that with our 2.8, the police's 3.2 and the fire department's 5.1? Or is that with the 2.25 that he asked all of us to get to?
That is with the 2.25. The increase to the city, to the property tax, to the city will be up 4.2 to 4.5 with 2.25 from fire, police and school. If budgets are approved based on where they stand now, the 281 for us, and I don't know the exact percentages for fire and police, but that would bring the increase above 5%.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. As I went through the budget book, I guess it was a while ago, it seems so long ago. I started taking a look at everything that we were adding and I read the mayor's memo. And I'm going to say in this dark times, even 4.5%, anywhere between 4.2 to 4.5% to ask the residents of this city to pay in taxes, that can be a big hit on the city. We don't even know how tax revenues are going to come in, given the fact that nobody's working. My husband's been out of work for over six weeks and every, you know, we have seniors that are on a fixed income. So I'm going to propose here, and I guess I'm, I'm going to throw it into motion. I'm going to make a motion that we keep the budget, the same budget as it was last year. We freeze any and all hiring and that the budget will remain the same as a 2019, 2020 budget. No further hiring. We need to freeze right now until we see what happens in the city. Because we don't even know what's going to happen in September. So I'm making the motion to freeze the budget from the 2019, 2020 budget that we have right now. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion? Ms. Raymond?
I will second for the purposes of discussion. I do have a question for Mr. Donovan. In the past, we've had a beautiful big chart on the big screen that tells us what that looks like and what all the changes are so that we're not trying to do all this math in our heads or with our personal calculators. Isn't there a way on Zoom for us to see a chart of some sort and how the changes affect the budget? Because that would help me very much figure out what I'm doing.
Um, I think that's, I think it's possible. I'm not 100% sure how to do it myself. Maybe Ms. Kinsella can help us?
Yes, it's possible.
I agree. We just have to configure it, but we could do it.
Is a share screen.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's very difficult for me to make financial decisions without seeing how each change is going to affect our bottom line. And I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, that's kind of an aside from your motion. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. That's fine.
Ms. Giulio had her hand up. You have the floor, Ms. Giulio.
Thank you. I brought my budget book upstairs to my office with me because I thought we may need to look at specific parts of the budget. And maybe I'm the only one, I was a Girl Scout, so maybe I'm the only one that came prepared. But I don't know if that's a way we can look at this either. Okay. Good job, Jessica. Oh, yeah. Okay. So if we can't get something up on the screen, which I think would be preferable, we can use our books if we need to, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Giulio. I have my giant book and all my papers and my calculator. I just, I like it when Dan does it.
Does anyone else want to weigh in on, on this motion? Ms. Brown?
So my thoughts are that it's a little premature to put in, to place an entire hiring freeze. I do think that our budget is going to need some modifications, but not necessarily in personnel. I think that we should be pushing for the mayor to give, and I'm sorry, not the mayor, the Board of Aldermen to give us the largest possible budget because I think we're going to need a lot more, a lot, we're going to have to dedicate a lot more of it to academic regression than we've ever had before. We're going to have to look, because you know, a lot of times we focus in on the kids with IEPs and our state requirements to have to make sure that they're being serviced for whatever those needs are. But I think we're going to have to look into our more typical learners having to do some extra tutoring or we're going to have to do some modified after-school programs that will target a different group of kids than we're usually used to targeting. And so I do think the budget that we've been presented with, you know, while I'd like to sign off and say, yes, we will give you the moon and we'll give you everything, I think that's probably pretty unrealistic. But I think we're already going to have to move a lot of things around out of that budget to meet the needs of our students to cope, cope with the process after the COVID-19 pandemic that I would, don't think it's a good idea to ask for less than, or I think honestly, what the mayor is proposing for cutting it further than what we've already got is not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with, with Ms. Brown. I, I don't think, I don't think that it's feasible to, to freeze hiring or go back to the old budget. But we, we have a motion on the floor and Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Donovan could probably, because he's a numbers man and I'm not numbers at all. But if he could kind of, if we kept the budget the way it is right now with the tax increase, I mean, they'll have to set the tax rate. How much in dollars and cents would this be, a 4.2 to 4.5% on the overall part of our budget? And even though the overall part of the city, because you're not looking at like a $25 increase. You're looking at hundreds of dollars that's going to be placed on everybody's property tax. And as much as I would love to give more, then let's say on the budget, okay, if we think we're going to need more for personnel, then we'll do the personnel, but we're not, we can't stockpile it either. We have to be cognizant on the people who have to pay this. And I'm going to tell you, I've sat on both boards already. And if you don't get your unanticipated revenue, that helps. That's your auto registration. That's your permits that come in. Your budget can go flat. And then what happens when you don't have the money to pay everything out because your tax increase comes in December? Right now, when you pay your taxes in June, it's from last year's budget. But who knows if people are going to be able to pay it in June? Nobody's working. You can't live on unemployment. And the people who work for the city, they've got their jobs, the union people. And I'm not knocking anybody in the city, but they're the only ones who are working, the government employees. Everybody else is out of work right now. So we have to think about the people who are going to pay the bills. And if my taxes go up $300, $400, my husband still doesn't have a job come December, I'm not going to be able to pay my taxes. And if people can't pay the taxes, then you're not going to be able to pay your employees. So you need to take a look at it from that point of view also. It's nice to give everybody what they want and give all the hiring and, but we're in a difficult time that we've never hit. So I just want everybody to think about that. Thank you.
Well, I think, I think we're not giving everybody, everybody what they want, even with the 2.25%. But, okay, so I, I, I guess I'm going to ask the, ask this committee what, what they would like to do. Would you like to vote on it, on this motion? Looks like we, we've come to that point with, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Yeah, I was going to say yes. I mean, I think if we have no other discussion, I would like to say that I think Ms. Johnson makes a fair point about the instability of the economy and our tax base right now. It's, you know, it's, it's scary. Having said that, I, I think that I tend to lean more towards compromise than going extreme one way or the other. So I guess I would, I don't think we need to call the question if everyone's in consensus to go ahead and take the roll.
Right. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Odin. You have the, you have the floor.
I think we are facing hard times and a lot of our families are facing hard times. And some of this we might have to do, but I think it's a little bit premature at this point to take such drastic action. I think a wait and see how things are working out would be much better at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Odin. Ms. Giulio?
Hi, I kind of agree. I'm, I think it's really, it would be very serious to go back to the previous year's budget. I think that that would be pretty devastating to a lot of the programs. But I agree with, with Ms. Johnson too, you know, this is, if, if we need to trim the budget, then we need to go through it item by item and make decisions that we all can agree on. I believe that's the way we must do it. Is that correct? If we have to make reductions?
We can, we can make reductions. We can get the suggestions from administration and we can go with those. Or we could, we could come with some other, we don't have to go through every line item, but, yeah.
Ideally, I mean, I would like to go with it the way we've proposed it and then make the changes if that's not acceptable. But yeah, I think someone said we have three weeks to do that. If, if, okay. And that seems like a reasonable amount of time. Of course, when those, that time arrives, it may not seem so reasonable. But I would certainly like to see the administration's suggestions if we have to do that first and see where those go.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, and then we're going to take a vote. Go ahead, you have, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm kind of curious, why didn't administration come to us with some, with reductions in case we, how to reduce the budget at this time, anybody came up with reductions? Why wasn't anything put before us? And also, I guess, I know because of the virus, this coronavirus, things got tiptoed around here because we couldn't get to meetings. But didn't we have to do pink slips by April 15th or something if we weren't going to renew the teachers? Didn't we have to do that?
I, I don't know.
I believe that they were, well, I believe that there was supposed to be, you had to let the teachers know by a certain time whether or not you were going to renew them or not. And usually, because when, before the budget is set, you don't know if you're going to renew them or not. So I'm just trying to remember all that. And the other thing is administration should have had some information to us tonight showing us if we took X amount of dollars off, where we would be and what would they suggest that we reduce even tonight. So I'm not going to, it's great to do wait and see what happens here. But, you know, in lieu of everything, I'm not, I'm not going to do a wait and see because I wouldn't want to know what's happening basically with this budget. And I know people are watching us and people are probably saying, I don't know if I'm going to have the money to afford anything. And we have to think about people, you know? And we have to vote tonight to pass this on to the Alderman now? Is that basically what we have to do tonight? Or we're just having a regular meeting? Just a regular meeting tonight?
Ms., we're having a, well, we're, we're discussing the budget, deliberating on the budget and, and what we want to, how we want to move forward.
Okay. So when do we have to present our budget, I forgot, to the Board of Aldermen?
May the 19th.
Tuesday, May 19th.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Donovan.
So I would like, for the next meeting we have, if we don't, which I'm sure I'm going to be the lone ranger here in this vote, I think that we should have different tiers from administration saying to us what they would suggest that we could eliminate at this point in time to bring the budget down.
Okay. I'm going to go to Ms. Raymond, but before I do, I just want to mention that Ms. Zim has joined us. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Zim. And we have, just want to make her know that we have a motion that was made by Ms. Johnson to keep the same budget as last year and freeze hirings. And it was seconded by Ms. Raymond and that's what, that's what's on the floor. We have that motion on the floor right now. And Ms. Raymond, Ms. Raymond, you wanted the floor and then we're going to take a vote on it.
Sorry. Yes, I just wanted to point out that Ms. Johnson was correct regarding renewals of our teaching staff. We have a meeting on May the 4th to approve the renewal letters. So, or to approve renewals. Dr. Mosley's giving me a look like I'm saying that wrong. Is that, am I wrong, Dr. Mosley?
You're correct. I'm just looking up.
Okay, sorry. I immediately questioned myself and said, are my notes wrong? So we will have, Dr. Mosley and I have been talking about, and emails have gone out to the board about trying to meet weekly because of the number of things that need to happen due to the coronavirus and remote learning and all that fun stuff. But one of the things is, as Ms. Johnson pointed out, we have to let teachers know that they're being renewed for next year. And that is on our meeting agenda for May the 4th, which is in two weeks. I believe that the, that cities have until the first Friday after the second Tuesday in May for those notices to go out. So that's where we are on that. And then, I, I mean, again, I just think Ms. Johnson is right to point out the needs of our citizens as well as the needs of our students.
Dr. Mosley, you want to say something?
There's just a couple of things. I just want to point out that part of the budget reductions, if that's part of the reason why we don't have anything to present to the board, because we really didn't know what the board was looking for. For example, we've had times where the board has said, we're going to push this budget up, even though it's beyond what the mayor's request. We've had times where the board has endorsed that and said, we're not making any cuts. We'll take it as is. We're going to push it up to the, the Alderman and then make the case there. We've also had some situations where we've had to make some reductions. And if we have to do that, then based on that feedback I get from the board and some of the things the board are thinking about, I could have those conversations internally with people so they know that when it comes to the board level, they're not surprised and, and they know exactly why and the rationale behind that. The other thing that I want this board to consider too is that I think it was brought up at one of our other meetings and I'm looking at Dottie Icon. We also, the, the city's going through building, the city's building new developments. And there was one that was just recently approved downtown where they're looking to build some units there for, for. And there was one that was just recently approved downtown, um, where they're looking to build some units there, uh, for, for, you know, new housing. And so our budget is based on what we're thinking about population, we're thinking about how the city is growing. Um, and certainly all of this is before the COVID-19, where, where this budget was. So certainly if the board desires in terms of getting down to the mayor's number, or even close to that number, sometimes we've had, um, proposals to the alderman, and then we've gotten some feedback from the city hall saying, you know what, we can't give you this amount, but we'll put two, two hundred thousand in contingency with this, with this position or that. So there's always been some flexibility, um, when we presented the budget. So I would be happy to, you know, make some recommendations to the board in terms of where they would like the budget to be. But I also didn't wanna be, I say we, we didn't wanna be premature. Um, we wanted to keep the discussion, uh, fluid and open, and certainly we've had times when the board has said, we actually wanted to include a, you know, two years ago, I think it was an ELL position, and we did push it up to the, the city, and we did get support.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Um, Ms. Raymond.
I'm sorry, and, um, Dr. Mosley's, um, comments and also, um, Ms. Gilio's comments have made me think, um, after we take, I think we should take this vote, but then after that, um, I'm curious if administration has, um, any changes that they're proposing in this budget or that they'd like to propose at our next budget meeting, uh, as a result of COVID-19 and the shutdowns. Um, as Ms. Gilio said and Ms. Brown said, um, I do think we're going to have to have some sort of extension classes or catch-up classes or something. And I'm wondering how, um, administration feels this might affect this budget before we, um, make any final decisions. So, but I would suggest that we go ahead and vote on...
On the motion.
Yes, on Ms. Johnson's motion.
Okay, on the motion, uh, the motion is to keep the same budget as last year and freeze hirings. Uh, Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim? No, is that it?
Ms. Zim, you're on mute? Oh, there you go.
I'm not sure that I'm going to abstain because I think I missed too much of the conversation. And my concern is that what that exactly means. So I'm, I don't, I don't feel that I can vote right now without knowing more.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Bishop?
No.
Um, Ms. Gilio?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Um... Ms. Brown?
No.
Um, Ms. Oden?
No.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six no's, one yes, and one abstention, the motion fails. Okay, so we're gonna move on to discussing what kind of budget, uh, the committee would like. Uh, we have, we have the 2.81 that was proposed. We, or we could, we could, uh, discuss how to get it down to 2.25. It's up, it's up to the, uh, members, how, how they feel. Ms. Ms. Brown?
Um, can Mr. Donovan just remind us of the number, um, the actual dollars, not the percentage between what the mayor's requesting and, um, what we want? Are we at six hundred thousand? Is that where we are?
Yeah, to get from 281 to 225, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um, and just since I have the floor for a second, um, maybe for our next meeting, I could, administration could come forward with our suggested cuts to the 627. We could, I could also put together or freeze the budget, um, which would mean no new hires in it. You could see what that number would look like. Um, and the other thing to remember in this, very important this year, there's that 2.9 million dollars that is hopefully going to stay in the budget coming down from the state. So there's an opportunity, it should be for one-time costs, but there's an opportunity to potentially use some of that for catch-up learning and things like that without having to deal, to change the actual operating budget. I just wanna kinda throw those things out there.
Ms. Zim?
I, I, again, I'm so sorry that I was late, but I, I guess I would like to know if there's been any conversation with the mayor because I'm wondering if, if, if we're still holding to those dates or if they're gonna be pushed forward based on the fact that COVID has come and every, and everything else was pushed aside. So he may not be wanting to... Did anybody talk to him? Did I miss something? Did you hear me?
Uh, the budget is still, it's got the same schedule, Mrs. Zim. Um, they adjusted it slightly and sent it out a couple of weeks ago, but they're still planning on Board of Aldermen and still planning on voting on the budget, uh, first week in June.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I, I have, uh, Ms. Raymond and then Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, I'd also like to request, um, that administration let us know next week if there are any changes they propose as a result of the COVID-19 emergency. Um, so if, as a result of those, that, um, administration would like to make changes within the budget. Because I would hate to, um, get to the point where we approve this budget and then it doesn't meet our needs at all because our needs have changed since it was written. So I know that's a bit of work.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Oden, did you wanna get, did you wanna weigh in?
I, I, well, I have a question.
Oh, oh, okay, um, I, I'm gonna, I, I called on Ms. Brown and then I'm gonna go to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, 'cause you, 'cause you, 'cause I can't see when you raise your hand, that's why I, I, I went to you. But I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with Ms. Brown and then Ms. Oden.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Um, and now that I'm, now that I'm asking this, maybe these are too specific of questions for this format, but I'll ask them anyway. Um, my first one is, do we have any kind of a timeline estimation on when there'll be hearings on the lawsuit that we just became part of with Mr. Tobin? Because that would affect the percentage of our budget that, um, comes from the state and those kind of equity items. Um, I know that a school district like ours would benefit greatly if that goes through. Do we have any idea of a timeline about that?
I don't, I haven't heard anything, but I can certainly reach out to him and, and get some understanding. I, I think he sent something out last week, I think I forwarded it to the board, just more of an FYI. I don't, but I could certainly ask him that question and then get back to you.
Okay, thank you, that, 'cause I was just thinking, you know, when it comes, comes down to protecting our taxpayers as well. Um, we are paying significantly more per student than, um, a lot of other more, uh, property-rich towns. Um, and my other, just straight out of the chute, um, item, if we're looking at six hundred thousand dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, the transportation contract, that was, um, getting a five hundred thousand dollar increase. Did we already vote to agree to that increase? We did not. I've seen a shaking of heads. Um, because, I mean, that right there, that's a pretty quick way to get rid of a big old percentage. And if we don't have the money, we can't pay the buses, so they could kinda take it or leave it. I know it doesn't sound nice, but, you know, there's one.
Thank you. Um, just, we have to be... Just go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
Just be mindful, this is a public meeting, and we just want, we don't wanna show our, our... We just wanna be mindful, this is a public meeting, I just want to know that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Oden, uh, is next, and then Ms. Johnson, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. In the mayor's, uh, proposed budget, on the second page, the third paragraph, he refers to four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the startup expenses to move pre-K into the former Christian school building on Franklin Street, as well as to create the possibility that the building also could be used later for the Brentwood facility, which we are now paying rent for. Can, could Mr. Donovan tell us if that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for startup costs would include rent? Or is that a building that the city is going to purchase and would be paid for by bond?
Yes, I can, I can tell you what the proposed plan is. Um, the four hundred and fifteen thousand would be for fixing up the building. The plan would be to rent the building for two years and then use some of the, hopefully, excess funds from the middle school project to purchase the building. Um, so year one, we would pay rent. We have an IDEA grant where we've been approved, we could use that to pay rent for the preschool program. Uh, the second year, we'd get a significant piece of the rent from, uh, the rent that we're currently paying to Brentwood, we wouldn't pay that anymore. We'd basically transfer that money over to cover the rent for here. And then hopefully the third year, we would be purchasing the building.
Okay, thank you.
That's the plan now. With things, you know, have things changed because of COVID? Or, you know, that's one of the decisions in this budget that I think the board re, really needs to look at. We would like to do this preschool program and get them in one place. But if it's, you know, it still needs, you, you still need to approve that.
Uh, thank you. I, I think it would be a good move on our part. Uh, and I hope we can do it, and thank you for putting this together for us, uh, and giving up, showing us what the plan is, telling us about that. Thank you.
I had, um, Ms. Ms. Johnson, and then I saw Ms. Raymond's hands, so Ms. Johnson, you have the floor first.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Um, given the fact that the cost of fuel is coming down to records lows, would that be able to, um, be adjusted in our budget?
Well, we don't really have the cost of fuel in our budget.
But I mean, but I mean, against our students, you know, you know? Kind of thinking that.
Well, it, yeah, we haven't, keep in mind that it, um, the, the contract, we haven't approved it yet. It's coming to finance ops in May. Um, and it's a five-year contract, so the cost of fuel is extremely low now. But, you know, five years from now, it may be nowhere near that. So we, we can discuss that, but that's a very, you know, it's a point in time.
But I mean, don't we usually have a clause in there for adjustment when the gas went up very high? And we, didn't we adjust it? Because why would we be paying for something at today's cost? Um, and have, you know, yesterday's cost at today's in the contract? So if gas, if let's say gas is one, a dollar a gallon and diesel's two dollars a gallon, why would we pay yesterday's price today? So I mean, we, we have a clause in there. I mean, to me, it would be a clause in the contract that if the gas goes up, then we just pay more for the gas, for the diesel, really. Because I don't wanna pay a higher price.
We could probably, that would be contract language we could put in, talking about fuel if it goes up or down in any given year. So we can certainly put that in the contract once the contract is awarded.
Okay, and one other question, I guess for Dr. Mosley. Given the Christians, Christian school, you're gonna have part of the building, um, pre-K, and then the other part of the building for older students from like, what is it? The Brentwood from like, it's high school students usually, we're gonna co-mingle, how are we gonna separate the building out? So, so it's two different, totally, one extreme to the other on kids. I'm kinda curious about this plan.
Dan, did you?
They...
But Dan, I don't care.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. The, the Brentwood students would be on a separate floor. It's a four, four-story building, and Brentwood would, would, would have one floor, which would be separated from the other three.
Was this discussed prior to this at all? This...
It was discussed one other time, I think. Um, I don't recall when.
I don't think, I don't remember when I was on, when I came on the board, because it kinda, kinda striking me that, um, kind of a problem combined in schools and, you know, giving up rent on one school. But I am concerned that, um, on the Brentwood would only have one floor, of four floors. And that's not a lot for, um, more teenagers. Thank you.
It's, it's officially, it's about the same amount of space they have now.
Okay, um, the, Ms. Raymond, and did you, uh, wanna, want the floor? Okay, Ms. Raymond and then Ms. Gilio.
Thank you. Um, I just, I've confused myself. So Ms. Oden brought up that four hundred and fifteen thousand, and, um, then now Ms. Johnson was asking about it too with the Brentwood. But I'm getting my budgets mixed up because I thought that the, that was out of the, um, expected 2.9 million one time, um, dispersment from the state, which is separate from our operating budget. And so, um, I'd like to request that we discuss these things separately because I'm getting mixed up. Um, so can we stick to, can we put, um, this one-time 2.9 million on the shelf for now? Because we have time before we have to decide that and stick to talking about our operating budget? Is that acceptable to people?
It makes sense, yes.
That, can I just mention one thing about that, though? But in a sense, they're kind of tied together.
Okay.
Um, I, I understand when you're making motions and things, you wanna do that. But you gotta realize that if you want to change, put something different in the 2.9 million, that could possibly affect the operating budget. So there's a little yin and yang there.
Okay. Can you let us, did I mute myself? Can you let us know, um, when we're, uh, treading on those waters so that we are aware of what we're doing, if you catch it? Um, but in general, I don't wanna talk about, like, when she was talking about the 415, I was like, oh, look at that. We're more than halfway there to getting to the 600 that we might need to cut down to. And then I realized that that has nothing to do with the 600, so...
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you. Um, I think Ms. Ms. Johnson was next.
Gilio.
Uh, no. I'm sorry, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Gilio was next, I lost track, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I, I, I agree with Heather. I mean, I just looked at the sheet of the, the, I think it was number three on the item description of what we were gonna do with the twenty-nine, the two million nine hundred dollars, right? Relative to the preschool plan, but that is not why I raised my hand before. So I'm gonna digress just a little bit. Um, I just, I, I know that there's a real chance that we're gonna have to make some reductions to our requested budget if we've submitted the way it is. But I would just like to say that, that I am generally quite opposed to hiring freezes, especially when it affects people who directly interact with students. And I think that when we look at where we might make the reductions, I think that given all the students have been through these last two months and everything that's gonna happen in the fall, that that's something that I would, I would really be strongly opposed to. So that's just my comment on that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Okay, so, um, so that leaves us with, um, with, we still have the budget on, on the floor, and it's up to the committee what, what we would like to do. Um, I, I would suggest that if we don't make any progress today, um, that we do meet either next week or the week after again. And with, uh, administration bringing us, um, their suggestions to get down to the 2.25, so maybe we can have a better discussion on, on, on what we, what we want in our budget. Uh, or maybe we could, we wanna send the 2.8, uh, to, to the mayor. Um, but it's, it's, it's up to this, uh, committee what, how we would, uh, um, what, what direction we go, uh, next. Um, Ms. Brown?
I actually would like that if we wanted to, um, take what we've got right now. I'll take a look at things that we would like to see prioritized, and then see maybe three different options from, uh, the district. One for keeping the, keeping the, well, we know if they wanna keep the budget now. One for splitting the difference with what the mayor, um, has requested. So maybe go with, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar budget cut. And then one taking it down to, um, the six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And then we, let's see, let's see if we need to go really lean and we need to keep it exactly the same with no increase. Um, where would you prioritize, where would you put your priority on that? Um, you know, I still think a hiring freeze would be pretty extreme, but, um, I would like to see what... You know, I still think a hiring freeze would be pretty extreme, but um, I would like to see what, where do you prioritize other projects in the district? So if, um, can I make that as a motion?
Sure.
All right, um, I'd like to move that we table the budget until we have. Another meeting next week with information on. A budget proposal for a six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar cut. From the current project, the current proposal, a three hundred thousand dollar budget cut from the current proposal. And then a zero increase budget proposal with district priorities.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Um, Ms. Johnson's second, okay? Um, Ms. Zim? And I think I saw, I think I saw Ms. Raymond also. Ms. Ms. Zim?
Can I just clarify on her motion, what she's, when she's saying these three cuts, she's saying these, all three of these cuts are from the mayors? Are from the mayors or is she saying from the, from the uh, superintendents?
Um, she's saying that um, the superintendent had uh, suggested two point eight one increase. And it, uh, so she's suggesting three alternatives. Uh, one, we cut down six hundred and twenty-seven thousand to the mayor's alternative of two point two five. The other one would be halfway. And, and a third one would be zero increase over last year's budget. Am I correct? I think that's what she was, she was saying. When you made by.
Yes. That is, that is correct. Um, basically doing as um, Ms. Johnson has suggested with. The suggestion of a zero increase from our current calendar year budget. Which I realize would be very, very lean.
About the zero cut.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Well, can I just?
Go ahead. You have the floor, Ms. Zim, then Ms., then Ms. Gilio. Go ahead. I think we lost Ms. Zim.
I'm sorry. I just, I have concerns that because. I have concerns about a zero cut, in other words, a, a flat budget from last year. Because um, we, we obviously are, are, are sustaining increases. So that, so that means we have to cut classrooms. There's no. Way that I can see that we could go with, with a zero increase. I, I, I just, I just couldn't do it. I. Understand if I have great concern about the zero. I just think that um. You know, I think that, that, that we haven't been told to do that. And why would we do that? I, I just don't know where, where these guys are coming from with that. And I'd like to hear a little more conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zim. Uh, Ms. Ms. Gilio wanted to speak on it and I'm not sure if Ms. Odin watched because I can't see your hand. But go ahead, Ms. Gilio, you have the floor.
Okay, I think I might be a little confused about Ms. Brown's motion. Okay. Um, can I just say what I understood it to be, which I think is different from what Ms. Zim understood it to be? And so I need to be corrected if I'm wrong. Okay, I thought that we had three choices. The first one was to go with the budget we've already put together with the two point eight one percent increase. The second one was to um, go with the mayor's suggestion that we have a budget that's two point two five percent increase. And then I thought her alternative was to go somewhere be middle of those where we would only have a point five percent say increase. I did not realize that her budget included us going back to last year's budget. So I think I need to hear the motion. A little more elaborately so that I'm really understanding it correctly.
Okay, maybe Ms. Brown can clarify.
So the intent of my motion was just give the district an opportunity the next time we meet to present us with their. Suggestions, their best case scenario for, there are those scenarios. A six point, uh, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar decrease from the current present budget as presented. A three hundred thousand dollar decrease from the budget that presented. And then on what would, what would it look like if we had to go with a zero increase as was suggested earlier? Um, as I, I agree, I don't think that's a good suggestion. I just want to see. What those would look like, what the district would have to do to make those things happen. So those, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Um, Ms., uh, Dr. Mosley?
So just so I'm clear on the last zero, which means that we would not take the two point two five? And we would just keep a level funded budget from last year? Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, because I think that's what, I'm, maybe Mrs. Johnson could uh, correct me if I'm wrong. That's what she was suggesting in our first motion. Was a zero increase with a hiring freeze. So we, I'd like, I guess, I'd like to see what the district would look like operating under that scenario.
Ms. Odin, did you want to weigh in and then?
Yeah, we, we, we haven't been asked to come in at a, a flat budget. And I don't think at this point we should be offering uh, that. It's a, a lot of work that we might not have to go through. Uh, it'd be painful. So um, I, I, I can understand. What the two point, the six, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollar cut would look like. And possibly the three hundred, but I'm not interested in, in going to a, a, a flat budget.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Uh, Ms. Bishop, Ms. Bishop.
Um, so Dottie just said, or Ms. Odin just said what I was going to say about not, not prepping work that may not need to get done. We do have a crisis going on in our hands and everyone's really busy. I would suggest, because what everybody else has said with the, the. Learning regression happening, possibly happening, needing to kind of retool ourselves for next year, building on our community. I say we propose the budget that we've already made and we see what the city says. And then we work on it once we get their numbers. And that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Zim and then Ms. Raymond. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see what, what's going to be taken out of the budget and, and then rebuild it from zero. Because that's basically almost like a zero-based budget and really zero-based budgeting is starting from the beginning and starting what you need. I mean, we have um, our classes, our students enrollment is coming down. And I understand we're going to need um, probably more um, tutoring, class time, whatever the students are going to need. But I want to make sure that this budget, it's going to focus on certain things and not on other things. Because we can all sit here and say, well, you know, the virus is going to be gone and everything's going to go back to normal. We know it's not going to be back to normal for a while. And we have to think about the people who have to pay the taxes on all this too. Because if people can't pay their taxes, then you can't employ anybody. So this is what I'd like to see, and I thank um, Ms. Brown for making the motion on this. Let's see where, how much we're going to, what exactly is going to be out of freeze. You can always add back in. But if you can send it off to the Board of Aldermen, you know what they can do? They can do a flat cut. They could say we're going to take out two million dollars. And then you're, you're, you're left with less than if we do the hard work now and send it to them. Because they only have bottom line reduction. They can't go line item to line item. And I could sit here and I could take this whole book tonight and go line item to line item. And I'm sure I can come up with a million or two million dollars to remove from this budget book. It wouldn't be the first time and it won't be the last time. But I'd like to hear from the administrators, what's the most important um, line item to them? What do they feel is the most important? And then build it from there. Because the Aldermen can also come back. We could cut out a million dollars and they could put that million dollars in and say that we're going to give you the million dollars. So, you know, it, it can go either way. But let's do the hard work and let's make sure that everything that's in this budget is important, is the needed. Line item, the needed personnel, not the wanted personnel, not especially at this time, we've got coming out of this COVID virus. And it could take till September till we get everything back up and running normal. We don't know. It could take one month, it could take five months. So that's just my input. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome, you're welcome. Uh, I had Ms. Zim, then Ms. Raymond, and then back to Ms. Bishop. But Ms. Ms. Zim.
I, I think it would be nice if we just waited until the administration came back. And they had a chance to review the budget and, and make any changes they wanted to recommend. And then we would decide. I do have a struggle with saying what we, when you're saying this is what we want and this is what we need. When I look at what we need, we, we, we always have personnel shortages. In the high schools, some of the sizes of our classes are astronomically large. Uh, I, I, I couldn't tell you the exact sizes at this minute, but I can tell you one time there was a music class at Elm Street that had ninety-seven kids in it. So when you say wanted and needed, our needs are always greater than our budget. And if you, and if you don't start with that premise, then I'm, then I don't know where you're coming from. Because having been on this board for thirteen years and every single year. Having to cut, cut, cut because the increases were more than the, than the proposed increase from the city. I do agree with Mrs. Johnson about the taxpayers. Obviously, you know, at some point in time. They can only pay what they can pay. I agree with that. But if we, if we go to the city and we say, you know, well, we're going to cut even lower than what you proposed. Then they're going to say, well, they didn't need it in the first place. And, and I think that's a bad premise to send to them because I don't think it's true. Uh, we wouldn't be in this lawsuit if that was true. Obviously, the lawsuit that we, that we all voted for last week or the last meeting. Said that, that we are a property poor town and we don't get enough resources to, to give equal education to what the rest of the state property rich towns give. So I, I would, I, I think we should just table it and let the, let administration come back to us. And then we can go from there because we're really starting again is what we're saying. At least that's what I'm hearing. And if we're starting again, then we should start with administration just the way we usually do. It's just that this whole, it's, it's overwhelming, all of the, the technology, that everything is so much going on that, and our meetings have been diminished. So, thank you.
Hey, I had Ms. Raymond and I think next, and then Ms. Gilio. So Ms. Raymond, Ms. Ms. Gilio, and I, did I skip over you, Ms. Bishop? I think I did. Um, yeah, so um, so why don't I go, why don't I go to Ms. Raymond, Ms. Bishop, and then Ms. Gilio? But, but Heather, yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Garino. I move to amend Ms. Brown's motion to strike um, the part about uh, requesting a, a budget with a zero percent increase. Um, I forget the exact language, but the language to that effect. Um.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I just, I, I agree with Ms. Bishop that it's asking for work that um, may not be necessary. And if next week after um, Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley have come back with um, some of their. Priorities, if we still don't agree, um, we can, we always have the ability to go through and make changes line by line. Um, as we have in, in prior years. Um, so. I also had a question, but it's not related to my amendment, so I'll save it.
Uh, and I believe I said Ms. Bishop is next and then Ms. Gilio.
Um, thanks, guys. I, I, I think we do need to look at things and, and where we can provide some flexibility. Um, I would be hesitant about. Not pushing forward the budget as it is, only because we've spent, you guys have spent so much time working on the five-year plan. And incorporating in everything that we need to get the, the social emotional learning in place. I think we're going to see a lot of issues um, with kiddos returning to school after this. I don't think it's far-fetched to have all of this stuff in the budget that we're asking for. I think it's going to meet the needs of exactly what we've been pointing out for the last. Several months about what they, about the social emotional learning. Um, and also. I don't remember who said it, I apologize, but about um, if we start cutting things out of the budget or not adding them in. We run the risk of that continuing to be um, a precedent. Having worked for an agency that had hiring freezes all the time and budget cuts and community impact based on that. Um, it could be a really dangerous road to walk down. Um, where we're not moving forward, we're not doing the best that we can. It's, it's dangerous is what it is. Um, but at the same time, uh, tax increase is going to be huge. I completely agree with Ms. Johnson. Um, that I think there are a lot of people that aren't going to be able to sustain that, especially not working right now. But on the flip side of that, the people who aren't going to be able to afford a tax increase and who are being affected by their current budget. Are going to have kiddos that need more support at home because things are going to get stressful. I think every way we walk down this path, nobody is going to get everything that they want. But I think we need to pass the budget because it really focuses on what the kids need and what our five-year plan looks like. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gilio.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say that from the beginning, um, the administration proposed, proposed the plan, which would give us an increase of two point eight one percent. And we had various departments come and present to us. And I didn't honestly feel, listening to their presentations, that they weren't asking for something that they didn't feel was absolutely necessary. So making any cuts at all would be difficult. But if the administration would like to look at something else, I think we should just look at the um, what the budget might look like if we. Agreed with the memo we got today from Mr. Donovan where he refers to the mayor asking us to keep it to two point two five percent. Um, I don't think there's, there should be a big variation of what we look at other than that. And I'm not sure if that's what Ms. Ms. Um, Raymond's motion was or not, but um, I'm sure she can restate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I saw Ms. Brown and then Ms. Raymond.
I just want to be clear. I'm not advocating that we keep our budget neutral from one year, from this year to next. The reason I'm asking for that evidence is because I think it's actually going to give us some pretty substantial data when people look at it. A budget that lean, it disrespects our teachers, it disrespects our students. It doesn't do. It doesn't give good value to our taxpayers because our job is to create educated individuals that. Are going to enter the workforce when they're eighteen or twenty-one or twenty-five, or be prepared for the next step in life. And, but there's going to be people out there that are looking for that. So I think, and, and I'm, like I said, I'm not advocating to keep our budget. With a zero increase because I don't think that we can logistically do it. But I am concerned about, I am concerned about the taxpayers and I think that we should. Um, I think that by showing what a really lean budget looks like, the people who really want to pick through it with a pine, pine tooth comb. Are going to see that that's not really what the education system here in Nashua needs or what we're going to give to our students. Um, that said, I'm fine with the motion if that's what you guys want to vote on.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Raymond.
Um, I, Ms. Brown just made my point as to why I don't think we ought to ask admin to do all that work. If we all, it seems a majority of us think that that's a bad idea to have that budget, then I don't think we ask. Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley to spend all that time next week. So my motion was to amend Ms. Brown's original motion to strike just that part and continue to ask. Um, I'm also just going to mention that we can just ask Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan to give us information. We don't have to make a motion for them to give us information. So we've just spent a very long time. Talking about what information we want them to give us, which is kind of circular. So on that, I call the question.
I agree. We'll just give it to you. Okay, uh, okay, on the amendment to uh, strike uh, the zero increased budget from, from the original motion. Uh, Mr. Garino votes yes. Um, Ms. Johnson?
No.
Uh, Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Odin? Ms. Odin? Uh, Ms. Odin, are you there? Can you hear me? Oh, you got it on. All right. How do you vote, Ms. Odin? I think she's having audio troubles. But I have uh, one, two, three, four. Five yeses and two noes. Is that, no, I got one, two, three, four, five yeses and two noes. So the, the amendment passes, we're going to strike out the zero uh, budget in, in, in scenario. Okay, now would you like to vote on the original? Now, the original motion uh, is. Now, the original motion, uh, is that, uh, administration will come back and show us what cuts they propose for to get it from 2.8 to 2.25, which is a, a reduction of 627,000. That's the mayor's, uh, proposal. And then halfway there, a reduction in, uh, 300,000, which would be a little bit more than the mayor's proposal. Okay, does everybody understand that, that motion? Okay? So on the motion, Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mizzie?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses and one no, the motion carries.
Mr. Garino, I'm sorry that my, uh, audio wasn't working last time, but I would have been a yes on that vote also.
Okay, all right, thank you. It, it's going to be recorded, it's going to be on, in the, in the, uh, meeting minutes, so.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Uh, Mizzie? Mizzie, can you hear me? You have the floor.
Yes. If I'm correct, that means that we have tabled the budget. Can I ask a question of administration now? It's not a budget question, it's about our next meetings kind of stuff.
Sure.
I'm, I'm wondering, uh, I, I keep hearing that everybody else is closing in their schools in May and we're going to the middle of June? And I'm wondering i- if, i- is it commonly believed, have, we can't get a waiver or we can't close sooner than that? Or is it the board's opinion that we shouldn't, that we should go that long? So I guess ask administration and then if the board wants to comment about it, I'd love to hear what everybody has to say.
Okay, um, does Dr. Mosley or, or Mr. Donovan want to?
I would like, I'll defer to, uh, Ms. Raymond and then Ms. Ms. Johnson and then I can follow up.
Okay.
So, um, so two things. Um, one, uh, we need to be careful because this is not on our agenda. So the public doesn't have noticed that we were going to be discussing this tonight and they may not have tuned in.
Yeah.
Um, two, uh, Dr. Mosley and I discussed, um, our agenda for next week. Um, we've had to move, and, uh, something will be coming out to the board. But we've had to move, um, our meeting next week to Thursday because of some ETV and Alderman challenges. But that is on the agenda, um, for next week's to, for administration to present to us, um, what the whole story is with that. And I don't think we should go down that rabbit hole now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Ms. Raymond.
Sorry, while I have the floor, I did have a question from earlier that I deferred, uh, because it wasn't related to my amendment. Um, and that was regarding, um, part of our budget book. Can I ask that question now or do I have to wait till next week?
Um, I, I see no reason why you can't ask that question.
Okay, so in section one, on page 16, um, we have a, page 16, um, looks like this, I don't know if you can see it. Uh, but it says additional resources. Um, and then on the bottom, it says requested items not in budget. So I'm wondering, um, it's also page 14. I'm wondering if all of these additional resources are in that 2.8? And then the requested items not in budget are not in the 2.8? Just because it's been so long and now I'm questioning my recollection.
I'm not sure if Mr. Donovan can help us on that.
He held it really close, so it looks like this.
Yeah.
Does that help both?
I am.
That's a little 16 on the board.
I'm pretty sure that the additional resources are in the budget, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That was all.
No problem. Um, Ms. Johnson had something to say and I, I, and after Ms. Johnson speaks, I think that, that, that we should, um, commit to meeting again next week, because I know we have, uh, May 16th. We have to get a budget by, uh, does that leave administration with enough time to, to, uh, deal with that motion? If we meet next week or do you need two weeks?
No, that's, that's fine as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, great.
All good.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
I was just going to say to Ms. Zee that I had sent out some information about schools and if she'd like me to, I don't know if I sent it to the whole board. I know I sent it to, uh, Mrs. Raymond. I'll be more than happy to send it over to her and then she can read about the closing, you know, the school dates. That's about it. I'll send it over to her.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Oh, I'm just looking at, um, the dates. Uh, Ms. Kinsel and I have been talking, uh, and she's been talking to ETV about, um, what dates we're able to meet, um, that don't conflict with the Aldermen so that we can get our, uh, meetings aired. And I don't see a budget time available next week. But I do see that we have a meeting scheduled for May 6th for budget.
That would, that would work.
Am I missing something?
I thought we had a budget meeting that's weak.
I don't see it, so perhaps Ms. Kinsella could follow up with us?
No, currently the Board of Aldermen have, uh, meetings Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of next week.
Oh.
So we were the following week on May 6th, which still gives us the following week if we needed it. So.
Do we mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm sorry.
I had Dr. Mosley.
I, I'm not trying to ruin anyone's, every day is like a Friday, every day. Would people be opposed to meeting like, like, not to be Debbie Downer, but like Saturday morning? Uh, because every day feels like a Saturday. I mean, I'm just like, uh, you know, I'm not trying, weekends are weekend, uh, Friday, maybe not Friday, but just maybe Saturday morning or maybe Sunday morning for like an hour. I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know. What, your thoughts?
Right.
Uh, Ms. Gilio? Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
Meeting anytime Saturday. Um, I'm not leaving, this is day 40. So, um, I'm right here by my computer. So Saturdays like are just like Monday, Wednesdays to me.
Ms. Brown had her hand up, I believe.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, we're, Ms. Brown, there you are, okay.
Is it possible for us to, um, do a, like, 3:30 to 5:30 instead of, uh, 5? I mean, I don't know about, I know that we have some people with work schedules and things like that, but is that, um, does that work? Is it, or is it the ETV is not available until after then? Because I know that's our primary focus is making sure that we have, people can watch the live meetings.
I think people can.
Um, I, I think I can meet at 3:30, I don't know about other people during the week.
Okay, oh, all right. Sorry about that, Jen, I understand, I want to make sure everybody can get there. So if that doesn't work, I don't want to impede that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't speak for Jen.
Yep. Um, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Um, I, uh, it's probably not great for me to plan on not being at work. However, I'm sure my hours will be cut soon enough. So.
That's right, some people are still working, yeah.
Right, yes.
How about I let you guys know if, if that is a possibility for me? But right now, let's count on not doing that if you want to do that.
Okay.
But I love Saturday and Sunday, they're, I don't have anything else to do.
Okay, so, um, first of all, we should all, um, recognize Ms. Bishop because she is essential personnel and she's going in, um, every day to a hospital setting. So thank you very much. Um, stay healthy, stay safe.
I have a mask, so I'm perfectly safe.
Uh, so I think perhaps the next step would be to have Ms. Kinsella, um, and Dr. Mosley, um, perhaps, you know, talk about a time that works with ETV and then, uh, email the board to see if there's a, I wouldn't do it. It would be weird to do it on a Sunday and then have the next, the following Wednesday, like three days later. But I'll let you guys figure that out.
We're just trying to live in a way that, that's timely, you know? So we're starting to get a lot of, because probably after our Saturday, let's say we do it Saturday morning, there might be more questions or clarity, so trying to get the frequency up so that we can just get clarity.
Yep, like all of you, I'm literally doing nothing and I'm here. Well, I'm doing things, but I'm at my house, so.
Good. Okay, great. So, um, I don't think we have any other business tonight. If anyone doesn't have any more questions or comments, I could, uh, entertain a motion.
Sound moved.
Okay.
To adjourn.
To adjourn. Motion to adjourn, okay?
For tomorrow.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Garino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mizzie?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero, we are adjourned at 6:53. Thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Thank you, Tara.
You're welcome, good night.